Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 13th, 2015 School Board of Seminole County Board Meeting. I'm given the honor this evening to start with the invocation and pledge, and in honor of National Bosses Day coming up this week, I thought it was apropos for us to pause and to say thank you for all the phenomenal leaders we have here in Seminole County Public Schools. Whether you're a principal, executive director, a teacher, leader in transportation and maintenance, we know that you are changing lives each and every day thanks to the phenomenal leadership that you share with our precious citizens and students in Seminole County. So to that end, you're going to think that I actually hung these posters on the wall. I can't take credit for it, but Disney World has really shared a lot of inspiration with us, and I'm reading this phenomenal book entitled "Creating Magic" by Lee Cockrell, and I thought I'd share what he felt about leadership at the end of the day. At the end of your life, no one will care what titles you once held, or how much money you made, or what a big shot you thought you were. If you really care about your legacy, and you should if you want to be a great leader, then take a long, close look at your values and the principles on which they are based. If your character is strong, and you build your actions faithfully on that foundation, you will be remembered as a leader worthy of being followed. Fairness, honesty, respect for others, cooperation, integrity, courage, caring, these and similar virtues are what give you moral authority, and that is the strongest and most lasting kind of authority a leader can have. When you have that moral authority, people will trust you and believe in you, and then you can accomplish anything you dream of. And these are some of the action steps suggested. Know what you stand for and live by those values every minute of every day. Burn this fact into your brain. People will not be committed to you until they are certain you are committed to them. Always tell the truth. Spin and manipulation create distrust. Be kind, sensitive, and respectful to all, even when you are coaching and counseling them on their performance. A strong leader is a tough leader, not a hard-hearted one. Never humiliate anyone you do not have the right to. Never do anything to hurt someone's self-esteem or self-confidence. No one has the right to do that. Display the courage to stand up for what is right in all parts of your life. Never do anything illegal or almost illegal, and never ask your employees to do so. Be open with everyone and encourage them to be open with you. Create a diverse workplace and then respect the differences in everyone around you. Take the time for relaxation and fun and encourage your team to do the same. Make sure everyone you lead knows what your company values are and teach them to follow those values themselves. Remember that your influence as a leader rests on the strength of your character, and that if your character is not strong, neither will be the legacy you leave behind. I would like to say thank you for the legacies that every single Seminole County Public Schools leader shares, and to all of our student leaders, thank you for creating this wonderful community. Would you please rise with me and say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that all five school board members, legal counsel and superintendent are in attendance, and I have one recognition. Sean Eisler with the Business Advisory Board, thank you so much for being here this evening. Agenda modifications, Dr. Griffin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The addendum for good causes marked on electronic agenda by a green flag named addendum item. Also, I'm going to pull page 50 from the agenda titled 4F, our policy administering student medication. It's page 50, item 4F.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any items for removal or clarifying questions? Member Schaffner?
None, thank you.
Member Bauer?
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman Lockhart?
None, thanks.
Member Almond?
None, thank you.
And I don't either. Moving on to approval of the agenda outline, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, do we have any presentations?
We have three. Please join me up front.
I'm very pleased to be able to talk about the Let's Read Seminole program. Nine years ago, the Let's Read Seminole Reading Program was developed to help keep Seminole County Public School students reading during the summer break. This successful program continues to enrich the lives of students and parents and support district literacy goals. Schools distributed reading logs, brochures, and bookmarks in the Big Red Book Bus, Seminole County Public Schools' mobile library, visited 12 stops weekly checking out over 4,000 books to over 750 student readers and their families. Students also read eBooks checking out over 2,600 digital copies from the district eBook collection this summer. The Let's Read Seminole program could not occur without support and cooperation from schools and many departments, including transportation and maintenance, as well as media specialists and reading support staff. Many thanks to the Let's Read Bookmobile Media Specialists, Pat Goldman and Belinda Elmer, and the Bookmobile Driver Bonnie Williamson. Funding for the program is provided by Title I Seminole County Public Schools, the Foundation for Seminole County Public Schools, Sprint, Wright House, Cigna, and other community contributions. The student incentives awarded tonight were made possible through a $10,000 grant received by the Foundation for Seminole County Public Schools from the Cigna Foundation. The award benefits: three district initiatives to promote literacy, Let's Read Seminole, The Great Start Program, and On Our Way to an A. A portion of the grant was matched with state funds to total nearly $16,000. I'd like to invite John Murphy, Vice President, existing business, and Ben Hugel, Senior Account Executive from Cigna, to join the school board and our superintendent for the presentations. Thank you so much for your Each one of our six lucky district winners will be receiving a tablet device. Please congratulate the district winners as they are called up to receive their prize. Kaylee Buck from Markham Woods Middle School, and her mother Jen is also here, and AP Elizabeth Our next winner is Emily Stone from Rainbow Elementary, and I believe her parents, David and Danielle, who is also one of our district teachers, are here, and her sister Our next winner is Amanda Long from Milway Middle School, and I believe her parents, Next is Travis McCormick from Croomes Academy of Information Technology, along with his parents Brett and Leah, and I believe Principal Dimitri was going to come, or AP, is she here? Okay, awesome. And I'm not sure if Barbara, Dr. Barbara Ray made it or not.[665.73][665.73][applause] Okay, and then our last winner that's actually here tonight is Kiona Wolschlegel from Stenstrom And then our final winner was Patrick Socchar from Hagerty High School, but he was unable to attend this evening. Thank you so much.[777.57][777.57][applause]
Board members, this past Saturday in Miami, there were some special awards made, and I'd like to share with you the awards for the Seal of Biliteracy Program in Seminole County. Ms. Cardona, if you would please come forward. Dr. Calderon and Dr. Griffin were all honored for promoting world languages and dual language programs in our district. The Seal of Biliteracy is to encourage students to study languages, promote world language instruction, increase participation in the global community, and value the diversity and honor the multiple cultures and languages of Seminole County support. Congratulations to Dr. Griffin, Ms. Cardona, and Dr. Calderon for encouraging our students to be global learners through world languages.[854.01][854.01][applause] Ms. Cardona, we need you one more time. I'd like to introduce Ms. Cardona as the Director of ESOL, Dual and World Languages and Student Access. Ms. Cardona has taught Spanish, English, and ESOL from grades K through 12, and also ESOL at Seminole State College. She taught at Lake Mary High School for 18 years and was the World Languages Department Chair. She has a BA in English and Spanish, master's degree in teaching English as a second language from the Inter-American University, one more moment, Ms. Cardona, and an educational specialist degree from National Lewis University. Senora Cardona, muchas felicidades. Much
And Board members and Dr. Griffin, I'd like to invite our newest elementary school principal to come up and be recognized, Dr. Dan Windish.[940.23][940.23][applause] Dr. Windish will be the new principal at Carolan Elementary School. He has had a career of over 18 years. He's worked in two school districts and six schools and multiple grade levels, including, as he explained to us in his interview, two months as a kindergarten teacher. Right out of his internship, he was also a district curriculum specialist and has been an assistant principal for nine years. He earned his degrees from the University of Central Florida, including his bachelor's degree in elementary ed and both his master's degree and doctorate in educational leadership. In Seminole County, he's worked at Pinecrest Elementary School, Lake Oriente Elementary School, and Parton Elementary, and of course now will move over to Carolan Elementary School. His wife Shayna couldn't be here tonight. She's at a conference for her work in Las Vegas. That sounds like fun. In attendance with him is his mother-in-law Judy Lacy, his stepdaughters Leanna and Lauren, and his daughter Sadie. So why don't all of you stand up and help us congratulate Dr. Windish.[1011.43][1011.43][applause] In addition, his former principal Nancy Urban, the principal at Parton Elementary, and Donna Weaver, the principal at Lake Oriente, are both here as well to cheer him on. Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Windish. Have a wonderful career at Carolan Elementary School.
Now I'd like to call up Trudy Murdock to introduce her as our Coordinator of Accounting for our Finance Department.[1044.11][1044.11][applause] Trudy graduated from the University of Central Florida with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration and a Master's in Business Administration. She has worked with Seminole County Public Schools as an accountant too for the last 15 years. Trudy's primary areas of responsibility were covering accounting for federal, state, and local grants. She has also been instrumental in the accounting for the voter-approved millage projects, sometimes referred to as Fund 101. She's worked as the project coordinator and kept up with the financial accounting and reporting for this fund since it started in 1314. In her new role, she will be responsible for overseeing accounts payable as well as other financial accounting and reporting duties. Her family in attendance is her husband Michael
And I failed to recognize Mr. Isaac Cardona and Ms. Christina Cardona, Minnie's husband and daughter. If you'd stand up and we'll give you a round of applause as well.[1126.01][1126.01][applause] Thank you, and congratulations, Minnie. Board members, as you know, we've had a lot of questions about assessment, not only at the state level but at the local level as well, and many changes have been made over the last several months. We've certainly responded to the direction the superintendent and board members have provided regarding protecting instructional time for our students and minimizing the formal assessments that we use in Seminole County. In order to ensure that we're improving our communication to our families, Dr. Griffin directed us to produce videos, and we thank you for your feedback. We've edited those since many of you gave us comments as well as our school-based staff, videos for each level regarding what we know about assessment as of today. And we're very clear about making sure that the public and all of our Seminole County family know that changes occur sometimes at a moment's notice, and we'll continue to update those videos as necessary. In addition, we've produced five frequently asked question documents. Again, there's a disclaimer there that says this is what we know as of today, and it's pending legislation and changes to state statute. So we're sharing what we know as transparently as possible. There are still questions that parents may have, and what we'd like to suggest as always is that the first point of contact should be their principal. The principals have had an opportunity to look at the videos, look at the FAQs. They've also provided feedback. And we'd like our families to work with our principals if they have questions. And I can assure you that if a principal isn't clear or doesn't know, they contact their executive director, and we talk about it and make sure we respond appropriately. If we have questions that appear to be more frequent, we'll add those to those documents so that we can again make sure we're communicating with our families. We'd like to show you just a couple of minutes of the elementary video. These videos will be available on the Seminole County Public Schools homepage tomorrow morning, as will all of the FAQs.
Hello, everybody. I'm Walt Griffin, Superintendent of Seminole County Public Schools, and I wanted to take a few minutes to talk to all of you about testing. You probably have read in the paper or heard on the news that the school board and I have proposed a Sunshine Solution. We proposed this because we listened to you during testing, and our elected officials asked us to step up with this solution. We have proposed moving to high stakes from any individual test and giving students multiple pathways to graduation and to promotion. We've also proposed utilizing a nationally normed test with transparent test items and transparent scoring. It's also vital to us that we get test scores back to you before the end. Now, all of this is the board and I working with elected officials to try to get a change in the law. While we are working on that, we need everyone to stay focused in 1516, and I want you to be aware of district and state assessment changes for this school year. Today, you're going to hear about changes in computer-based and paper pencil testing, and also about progress monitoring. It's important that we stay focused on the Florida standards and that our students continue to perform well. Our performance is what is giving us a voice in Tallahassee. And now I'd like to turn this over to your executive directors of elementary school, Dr. Marion Cummings and Dr. Robyn Delk.
Hello. Today, we would like to take this opportunity to update you on the state and district assessments planned for the 2015-2016 school year. All Seminole County Public Schools teach the Florida standards. The Florida standards assessment, commonly known as FSA, are designed to provide parents, families, teachers, policymakers, and the general public with information regarding how well students are learning the Florida standards. Per state statute, all districts are required to participate in state testing. All students enrolled in Seminole County Public Schools participate in testing.[1421.26][1421.26][music]
First, we'd like to share information about state-required testing at the elementary level. Results from all state tests will be shared with the school, students, and parents. This information is also used in the calculation of school grades and teacher evaluation. The tests will be administered via computer or paper pencil, or a combination of both, depending on the specific test and the student's grade level. Prior to administering each computer-based assessment, test administrators conduct a practice test that contains sample test items to prepare students for the item types, tools, and online interface students will encounter during testing. Training tests are available in the FSA portal for students to practice on their own.
This table details the FSA writing and the Language Arts State Required Tests for third through fifth grade students. Notice that the writing section of the FSA is administered separately from the Language Arts.
Thank you. That's an eight-minute video, so we thought we'd just show you the first little bit. And Dr. Griffin, Mr. Lawrence, I think the sound on the music was a little too loud for Dr. Griffin's voice, which wasn't that way when we looked at it.
Some people would probably prefer that.[1504.01][1504.01][laughter]
So we may need to look at that. When we looked at it originally, it was fine, so I don't know if it's the system, but I know our two elementary executive directors were just perfect with their sound, so thank you for that. So that's a little clip, and then as we shared, Dr. Wyndham has a piece, and Dr. Blazewitz has a piece for their particular levels, and Dr. Griffin's introduction is at each separate level, because we know some families have children only at one particular level. And then, right now, we're displaying, for example, the elementary frequently asked questions document. There's the disclaimer that we put. And as you go through the document, we've added questions that either you've shared with us from parents, we've received from parents, or the school-based staff has shared with us that there are questions that they're getting. So we look forward to continued communication as we receive information, and always to your guidance and feedback regarding any additional efforts we can make to ensure our parents are informed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, board members? Thank you for all that. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chairman Lockhart?
I'm just always the one with questions, so I was going to let somebody else go first, if anybody else has questions.
Do you want to comment?
Sure.
Thank you very much. It's very helpful to have the questions and answers and the video.
Thank you. There's a lot of discussion going on in the community that I think this will help answer a lot of questions, but I'm still hearing concerns about the use of the Iowa.
Yes.
I think there are some misinformation out there, and I would just ask if, I have several questions, if I could just ask you to clarify how often the Iowa is being administered, and to what grades, and what that test actually looks like.
The Iowa is being administered twice, and it's being administered to students in grades K, 1, 2, and 3. The K and 1 test will be read to the students as a whole, and regarding what it looks like, the K test has pictures that the students will look at, and the teacher may say, you know, put your finger here on the ball. There's a picture of a cat, a box, and a dog. Circle the picture that sounds like the same thing as ball. So it's that type of an assessment. Grade 1 has some vocabulary on it, and then grades 2 and 3 are going to get a little bit more complex with actually reading. So I don't, we are working right now, and I know there was a lot of questions over the last week about Iowa, and we have a Q and A that we're doing for Iowa to try to answer those questions.
Okay. So this is not in addition to the Discovery Ed progress monitoring that we had done in the past. This is in place of, correct?
Well, Iowa is not in addition to Discovery Education. There are no elementary schools using Discovery Education. I can't really say that it's in place of, because Discovery was a three-time-per-year progress monitoring assessment. We're not quite doing that. So it's the assessment that we'll be using to ensure that for one year of instruction, students document a year of growth, and if not, then it's our job to find out why.
So the three times that we would have administered DE are gone.
Yes.
We now have two times of Iowa, and is, are we using Iowa for the statutory requirement for VAM?
Yes.
Or the value-added model?
Yes, we are.
So if we didn't use Iowa for VAM, what other alternatives would there be for us? Because we have to use something to show that element for our teachers, correct?
That's correct, for 34% of their evaluation. That's the only standardized assessment that we are administering to K through 3 to show growth. As you know, in third grade, FSA is a proficiency score, but there's not a student growth score because it's the first time because it's the first time they've taken it.
So we didn't just say, "Hey, here's a fun idea. Let's just implement Iowa twice a year because we think that'd be a fun thing to do."
No, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because there are folks in our community who are very concerned that we've implemented Iowa, and they think that we have a choice in just not, we could just not do it. But that's really not the case. We would have to use something to comply with the state statute for VAM.
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. And this is, these, both are, all three of the elementary, middle, and high have so much information in them, and it's, they're wonderful. The middle school nine-week exams that are now, they're not new.
They've always used them.
Right. So when parents see those nine-week exams being new on the testing schedule, they're new to the schedule because we decided to be incredibly transparent and show everything, but they are not actually new.
That's correct, and we've actually, as you said, Ms. Lockhart, we're trying to be open and honest about how we're assessing students, and we put them on the schedule. But in retrospect, we think it was probably more confusing, because these students have had nine-week exams since forever. We all have. So, yes, I appreciate that they're thinking it's new, but it's in their instructional plan, and that's why they're being administered the exams. We're using that to progress monitor our students.
And that's also a state requirement, is that correct?
We do have to progress monitor students. I know there was some confusion, because some of the progress monitoring was reduced, but just this week, we received a memo from the department regarding reporting in surveys 2, 5, 3, and how many others, it was Tim, because I know I sent it to him and to Sherri and everybody else I could think of, regarding what we're using to progress monitor our students. So, yes, we have to be able to report what we're doing to progress monitor.
So rather than implementing a whole new battery of tests, we're using the already-existing nine-week exams to fulfill that requirement?
Yes. That was, I think, the direction of the superintendent and the board, to reduce testing that would not regularly occur and do what we could with that information formatively to help our students improve.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. I really, really appreciate it. And I think this is going to be an ongoing conversation, because as new things happen, like you said, you just got an email from DOE this last week. As rulemaking happens, we'll maybe need to continue. I have one more question about the Q&amp;A that went out last year. Parents who read that and understood it, do these replace that or are these in addition to?
These replace that Q&amp;A, and Dr. Griffin has asked us to look at what was produced last year, and we'll be giving additional guidance to our schools, but that Q&amp;A needs to be removed, and these Q&amp;As need to take the place of them. Now, not every question on the Q&amp;A that we posted last year has been included in these particular documents, because as you'll recall, last year we're at a different point in the school year. But we'll continue to answer the parents' questions regarding FSA and the additional information.
I think one of the pieces from that Q&amp;A that I would like to be sure we have not abandoned is our district's commitment to treating students and parents respectfully who choose to minimally participate.
Yes, and Dr. Griffin's put that on the agenda for the October 21 cabinet meeting. He'll have an opportunity to review the responses to those additional questions.
Okay. I have one more. I'm so sorry. This is kind of my, you know, my avocation. For parents who may feel the need to have their child minimally participate in Iowa, what would that do? How would that look? What would that, because we have parents who view Iowa currently as not being something that they want their child to participate in because of stories and things that they've heard from neighboring districts and how things happened last year. If a parent were to choose to have their child not participate in Iowa, how would that affect that child, the district? Play that out for me.
So, first of all, Iowa isn't a child's grade. It's not a state test that data goes back to DOE. Iowa is going to help us figure out where a child is in their learning progression compared to other students in their class, other students in their school, our district, and nationwide. So it's a piece of information, and parents will receive score sheets that are detailed as far as the skills that their children need, have accomplished, and skills, we won't go to the 4.0 scale, I promise, and then the skills that their children need to work on. So if a child doesn't participate, there will be a lack of information on that particular student from that particular assessment. That's not a battle that we're going to fight. Okay.
I'd like to just add that we are not using Iowa as a high-stakes test, and parents that I've spoken with are more concerned really about how the data is used. And this is for us, for our students, to make sure that we're instructing the way that we need to instruct it, to make sure that we had a year's worth of growth, but we are not using it as a high-stakes test.
Okay, thank you.
If I could add on one question with Iowa, I know when Iowa came and made the presentation to us, what we as a board really liked was how transparent they were. And how, how open they were with sharing the specifics of the results of the test with the students, the teachers, and the parents. Will that occur with these tests as well? Because if I was a parent like that, Ms. Lockhart, I would think knowledge is power, and that's very important. I want to know where my personal student needs remediation or acceleration, or where their strengths and weaknesses are, so I can better help them develop.
That's correct, and parents will receive the reports that were shared at the board meeting with the board, so they'll get some important information about their student.
Thank you, because I think that's really important. I think people, when they think testing, they're looking probably at how FSA was or wasn't administered correctly this year, and we still don't have results. So I would be a little bit cautious about that as well, but I think Iowa gets their results to us very, very quickly, and it would only help the family dynamics as well as the classroom dynamics.
The other piece, board members, we're going to, we have to look together very closely, because this was part of our Sunshine Solution. Not that we ever said Iowa was the be-all and end-all, but I want to make sure the company really does provide what we heard we were going to provide, and as we further our work politically, I think it's important for us to really experience and understand it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, board members?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cody. Moving on to the consent agenda, Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation?
That the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to student discipline hearing dispositions, Dr. Griffin.
That the school board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from Tuesday, September 15, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Board member comments on your committees, please. Member Schaffner.
The BAB in the month of, let's see, what month are we, in October? They had a social, well-attended, but it was a great evening of just, you know, camaraderie and a lot of conversation. It was great. We also, I represent the foundation, I represent the board on the foundation board, and there's a lot going on with the foundation right now. We have Arts Alive coming up November 21st. We also, on November 17th, have Take Stock in Children, the breakfast, isn't it the 17th, Davey? You'll be getting information on that as well. And we have also taken in several new members on the foundation board. I represent you on the chamber, the Seminole County Regional Chamber, and I think you are aware that they wrote an endorsement letter for our Seminole solution. And that's it for right now.
Great, thank you. Member Bauer.
I had an opportunity to attend another meeting of the SCPS Computer Task Force, and I just want to, again, thank Jason and Tim and Corbett. We're doing some, it's amazing, the opportunities for technological advancement and learning that we're going to be able to, I think, implement over the next five, five years, and what's coming with, you know, our goal is to kind of get technology at every level in the school system in some manner. And I think, I think we're going to present some options the superintendent to recommend to the board, which are, it's just really, really, when you, when you see the opportunities are out there, I mean, it's been very informative to me. I thought I knew something about technology, but I clearly don't. So I just want to thank the staff and everybody who's involved in the committee for what we're doing. I think it's going to be worthwhile.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Lockhart.
The Region 5 Task Force met last week. It's a combination of folks from the sheriff's office and our alternative school leadership, discipline, what have you. Learned a lot. A representative from the CCIB, the Joint Task Force on Drugs in the community, was there, and I added some new words to my vocabulary, which hopefully they'll be in the minutes, and I can share those with you all. Not four-letter words, but like drug-type words that I wasn't familiar with. Had a great opportunity to hear from Dr. Blazewitz, and I'm sure we're all going to be able to hear from Dr. Griffin about, or maybe you already have in your private meetings with him, about some of the little change in focus on modifying student behavior, negative behaviors, and trying to turn those into more positive behaviors. And that was wonderful to hear. And the sheriff's office, I think, once they got a chance to really understand the purpose and how we're planning to hopefully go about it, I think really were, I think they were encouraged and really looking forward to being able to be helpful for our students. Love the relationship that we have with our folks at the sheriff's office. They truly care about our kids. They want to see them succeed, and I think we're very, very blessed to have the relationships that we have with them.
Thank you. Mrs. Almond.
The children's cabinet will meet tomorrow, and they've written a resolution in support of the Sunshine Solution, so they'll present it to the membership for vote, and I expect that I'll be bringing that back to you.
Great, good. Thank you. And the committee meeting that I represented the board on with CentFlour School Boards Coalition, we met this week and unanimously decided to endorse the superintendent's recommendations for assessment and accountability in the state of Florida, and asked that I craft a letter to go to the governor, which I have done, has been put in the mail, sent each of you a copy of that. And the entire meeting was spent on our legislative issues, where we decided less was more. So we focused our issues on two focus areas, one of assessment and accountability, and the other on funding. So I think we finally have whittled down what our priorities are, so we can effectively communicate and work collaboratively with our elected officials in Tallahassee to do what's best for our citizens. So thank you for your input. And moving on to our public comments, we do have some people who wish to address the board, so Vice Chairman Lockhart, I'd ask that you share some information with them.
The public input segment of the meeting is provided to allow the public to present specific matters to the board for consideration and referral to the superintendent for inquiry and action or to address specific items on the agenda. The public input segment of the meeting is not open to presentation of campaign issues by political candidates, student disciplinary actions, pending employee disciplinary matters, or pending litigation. It is not the intent of the school board to deprive any person of his or her right of freedom of expression, but it is the intent of the board to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct on the part of members of the public appearing before the board. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must clearly identify the matter to be addressed on the speaker sign-up form. Speakers shall direct their comments only to the board and may not address the audience. Please, if you would, remember when you, before you address the board, to state your name and address for the record.
First up, please, Mr. Christopher Stagelton.
Thank you, school board. I'm a 12-year resident of Seminole County. I live in Geneva, Florida. My address is P.O. Box 623262, Oviedo, Florida. I've been a community leader in community-based education, as well as in the art and science of learning and teaching at the University of Central Florida. I've been very admired of the student museum, and I have been, as you've seen from the very beginning, presenting proposals, not only save the student museum, but make it much better and have impact on the educational, economic, and social and cultural reputation of Seminole County, which I think is very important, because I'm proud of being a member. In presenting that presentation, the schedule that was sent out basically has that student museum dismembered and sent away, and then reduced down to a touring show before we even have a chance to respond to the RFP, in order to preserve both the schoolhouse and the student museum that are important hand and glove for each other. We need to postpone that dismembering and sending off the student museum until we have a chance to propose it and to proprove a proposal to keep that together, because this grammar school is not just a shovel of building, is not just an asset. It is hand and glove, a part and most important asset of the student museum's collection, and needs to be set together in the community. We've talked to mayors, we've talked to universities, we've talked to former school members and teachers, and businesses in Sanford. They're very positive in not only preserving, but extending and building it as a national example of how the school can, in the community, and businesses can come together to look at the future of the educational tourism of Seminole County, which is very important, in particular, in talking to the mayor of Sanford at the Tourism Board, how this is not yet identified, but is a huge potential to increase the value of Seminole County to the nation and to the area. I request you delay the dismembering and in the, sending the way of the school student museum, and have that together with the schedule on the proposal to save the national landmark, so we can preserve it and to extend it and to build it for the school, for the community, for the business, for everybody and the citizens of Seminole County.
Thank you so much. Mr. Warren Genison, please.
Good evening, Warren Genison. I live in Sanford. And a few remarks regarding the student museum. I consider the student museum and the school as one, and I'd like to speak to the legacy. The student museum of Sanford was born out of the fourth oldest school in continuous use in Florida. It was Sanford's first high school from 1902 to 1911, then it was an elementary school until 1984. It became an interpretive center and teaching museum that served fourth graders of Seminole County Public Schools and others as a teaching resource unlike that found anywhere else in the state and beyond. Regarding its potential, it was not advertised well enough to draw wide attention, but I met a woman in Texas recently on a trip. She's been here, and she told me that this place was easily one of the best museum experiences of her life. She remembered so much about it that I was truly astounded. I later read a review by a visitor from Rhode Island, who gave it five stars and a glowing report as a distinctive facility with a cool look, remembering that Romanesque revival architecture is rare around here. Fourth graders wrote about their visits to the Stu in glowing terms as well, each saying something regarding their favorite part of their tour. There were grandma's attic, 1902 classroom, often mentioned, but the mock-up of the 1,200-year-old Temukan Indian village and the frontier log cabin in the room across the hall. Many kudos were given by these students for the teaching, learning experiences conducted by adult volunteers and their period costumes, and oh, yes. In its day, the student museum served well and can again, with the proper repurposing group, regarding building the community. We, the new student museum planning committee, believe we have what it will take to carry on this legacy for the community. We will resume the fourth-grade social studies program and offer such a wide and diverse curriculum in so many other directions. We want to become a hub, as a clearinghouse, for community-based programs that will draw people from all over the country and the world as well. We plan to place heads on the pillows of Sanford's planned downtown hotel and help to draw visitors into Seminole County shops and other venues that are not currently doing so. Yes, we have a dream. We are planning an eye-popping presentation that will inform and entertain this board and the community in the months to come that will be talked about, and then we will get busy making our plans into a reality never before anticipated. It is our conviction that we, together with our sponsors and community supporters, will accomplish a great and positive experience for everybody who lives here and those who desire an educational experience for everyone, especially families. We do feel badly about the delay, requesting the delay and holding up, well, you put it lightly, that dismembering. That's the only thing I can say. you, you put it lightly, that dismembering. That's the only thing I can say. I just visited there a few days ago, and I was astounded. I walked into a place I've spent five and a half years of my life working as a volunteer in and grew to love dearly, and the people that I worked with were fantastic, and it made me sad to see what was going on.
Thank you, Mr. Jenison. Appreciate your support. Mr. Burke Randa, please.
Hello, my name is Burke Randa, and I'm, my address is 288 Ashton Terrace in Oviedo, Florida. And I'm here with concerns about the four-point grading scale. My main concern is that the four-point grading scale punishes A students. Any student who, under the old system, earned an 89.5 to a 91.5, that earned an A in the class now would receive a B under the new grading scale. I know that Dr. Griffin has had, or at least initiated a discussion on it, and I appreciate that. I think more needs to be done. I think the solution of giving extra credit to students is a bit subjective. There's no mandate, it's unenforceable. And it will still result in a situation where students who otherwise, who earned an A in the class, would still receive a B. I think the proper solution is to raise the grading scale to 4.5, so that each grade is evenly distributed over one point, instead of an A being distributed only over half a point. There's nothing in the Florida statutes that prohibits this action. The only thing the Florida statutes say about grades is that an A is a four, a B is a three, and so forth. In fact, the Florida statutes doesn't say that you can assign a 2.8 to an 83%, yet that's something that's encompassed in the new policy. Here's what the Florida statute says, Florida Statute 1003.437, Section 1. Grade A equals 90% through 100%, and has a grade point average value of 4. You're currently running afoul of that statute. Right now, a student who earns over 90% receives a B. That's in direct contrast to what the Florida statutes say. The problem is that you're using quality points, this middle filter between a grade and a percentage on a test. You're using this system to convert that percentage, which used to be a grade. Now you're filtering it through, filtering it through a point system to make a grade. The grade is what gives us the quality point. That filter, that tool of the points you use in between are not quality points, it's just a tool you're using. Don't restrict yourself in the statutes by saying you can't raise the scale to make it fair for all students. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Could I ask a follow-up question from earlier? Mr. Rinaldi, could I ask you a couple of questions? Heard from two different speakers tonight that the contents of the student museum are being dismembered. And I was under the impression that we had moved the contents of the student museum to a locate, to another location, to a building, to a secure place, because the student museum right now in its current condition is not a quality condition to be holding archival material.
Exactly. I mean, the fact that it's unoccupied at this point has made us concerned about what's going to happen, be it environmental, be it someone breaking in. So, two parts. The first part, we've been working with UCF to take the archival documents that are most sensitive when it comes to the environment which it is in. And part of the board agenda today is to finalize that MOU with UCF. And then we'll temporary transfer that information over there for a six-month period, and with the possibility of extending for another six as we evaluate and we go through the process on what's going to happen with the student museum. The second part are the actual exhibits, and we've started to box, catalog, and move the exhibits from the student museum to Longwood Elementary School, where we're able to control the environment in those spaces.
Okay. I, I certainly can see from a community member's perspective how that appears to be that we're dismembered. But I really think, from everything I've heard from you and the condition of the facility, that, that really is protecting the contents of the collection.
That's our intent, exactly.
And, and I would, and I would say also, in, in a prior life, in, in working for Seminole County Government and being able to coordinate with Rose Beiler at UCF for quite some time, that was, that was a concern of hers as well, was that the environment of that building really was not conducive to, to maintaining the, those documents.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Excuse me. Excuse me. Dr. Griffin, do you have any unfinished business or new business?
I don't. I'm Dr. Caldron. We can move right to the superintendent's report. Board members, if you could look at page 399, this is an information item only. I would like some direction regarding our student calendar. Mr. Rusty, you might want to come up, I'm sure we'll have some questions. And board members, what we did when we had a work session and didn't get real clear direction, we had a lot of unanswered questions, I believe. So we put in the book for discussion, option one, which was the committee's top choice. And I know that you have some questions. I guess wanted a little further discussion and direction before I put on the consent agenda either next meeting or the following meeting.
Ms. Almond.
Mr. Rusty, this past year, or recently, we took September 23rd off the calendar and made it an attendance day. And then you were collecting data for attendance for weeks prior to and following. Can you share that with us?
Yes, ma'am. We collected the student attendance data from the first day. We looked at the first day attendance through the 23rd to see was there some variance, because that was known as a low attendance day. And from the data I shared with you all in an email, you'll notice there really was really no significant change. In fact, that day was actually more well-attended than some other days around the same time period. So there was no significant difference. The same information was shared about staff attendance, because I know that was another concern. And if you reviewed the data I provided you, there really wasn't any significant difference from other days.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
If it's possible for us to get this calendar in color, that would be very helpful, because I think the first day of school, the 10th, would, is actually a different color.
It's available.
I asked for the same thing.
Thank you. It all looks very gray to me.
I have some comments I'd like to make. Looking at the calendar for 1617, I'm looking at the, I thought our discussion had been to have a whole week at Thanksgiving was an overkill, because they come back to school and they have two weeks before they have to take exams. So that means teachers have, they're going to have to do, you know, renewal and figuring out what the tests are going to be, getting ready for the test, and the kids get ready for the test. I think teachers, and I've heard this from teachers and parents, they would prefer to have more time before the winter break, rather than come back January 9th to school. I mean, after Christmas, it's over. After January 1st, it's over. The kids are ready to come back to school, the parents are ready to get them back to school, and for us to have that whole week of January off is not, I don't think that makes any sense at all. And I would suggest that perhaps we might want to consider, we've had the two days that we've had in the past that we have honored when we had low, low student attendance and low teacher attendance, that we might want to consider one of those days and not the other. So I'd, I'd like to see some juggling here as far as, as far as the December. In December, the, the 21st, I, I had to get a color copy, because it was all gray to me too, I have to agree with you. On the December 21st, that's the end of the second quarter. So that would be, the teachers then would be giving exams probably the 19th, 20th, and 21st. That would still be, but then they've got the 22nd, they're going to have to get their, their grades and everything in. And then they're off, and so that doesn't give them much time before the actual holiday. So if we could do some juggling with some of that, that would be my preference. I don't think it's necessary to have the whole week at November for Thanksgiving. And it just, it's very choppy, because that puts them back in a situation of having to come back to review. As soon as Thanksgiving is over, they come back, and, you know, they're whammed, they've got review, and then the exam's right off the bat. I don't think it gives them enough time. So I'd like to see some juggling with that.
Dr. Griffin, do you have any data as far as, and I thank you for providing the data for this year of high and low attendance? Do we have any data historically for Thanksgiving week in attendance? Because if I recall, when I'm walking through the classes on Thanksgiving week, I'm seeing a lot of empty seats. And quite frankly, if you look at the end of the Thanksgiving week, there's actually three full weeks of instruction prior to final exams.
Yes, I do, I do have some data. Mr. Kelly has the exact numbers. But I can tell you that over the past couple of years, we've had more students absent on those particular days. This, this past Monday before Thanksgiving, I believe it was about 1,800 students, and the Tuesday was 2,100 students, compared to an average daily of about 900 students.
But you're going to have at elementary level, they have all the, you know, the Thanksgiving feasts and Indians and all that. That's what they do Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So that means that's going to back that up until the week before. I just think we're losing a lot of instructional time here that it's valuable for us. And if you'll notice, we only have 88 days in Semester 1, the way this is set up now. And I, and 92 days in Jan, in Second Semester, in January, not come back until January 9th. I can't imagine how parents are going to think, what they're going to think of that.
Well, I agree with you. It'd be great to put them back in on January 2nd. But when we look at trying to equalize the two semesters, I know when we had this discussion, when we were looking at four different calendars earlier in the year, staff recommended to us to have a few more days in the Second Semester because of the additional state-manded tests and year-end tests. So you were really equalizing the instructional days, perhaps not the calendar days, but we were trying to make it as equitable, especially for the teachers who might teach a one semester AP course, because you really wanted to be fair to the students, whether they take it the first semester or the second semester.
But there's no reason we have to come back on a Monday. It doesn't have to be the 2nd or the 9th of January, it could be the 4th.
I think if I recall, the reason why we wound up in that situation was because the language in our union contract says that we have to have two full weeks.
You have to have 10 days.
It doesn't say 10 days. It says two full weeks, does it not?
Correct, it's two weeks.
So I think that had been interpreted that two full weeks is Monday to Friday, Monday to Friday.
So if you, but if you backed it up in December by a couple of days, is what my point is. I think they would rather have the time off before the holiday, rather than after the holiday. So for instance, if the 21st was the last day for teachers too, of December I'm talking about, then if you went, that you'd have your two full weeks if you went to the 4th of January.
Would that be interpreted as two full weeks at that point?
It would still be 10 student days, yes.
I see where you're trying to go with this, Ms. Schaffner, of moving the teachers forward two days. But then I'm also concerned about the testing window.
I think that's why.
Of having just the one Monday. And if you're not participating in testing, I think that would be a very low student attendance day, especially like in elementary, if they're only supposed to go to school for one day that week. If only our weeks were 10 days in length, we could play more with it.
We could blow it up and talk about year-round school.
Oh, no.
No, oh, okay, no, never mind.
Then they're done that.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I, I think this calendar, I, I think the committee did a very good job. Aside from the, the issue that Ms. Schaffner has brought up, I think we, we end before Memorial Day, which is wonderful. I have heard from quite a few parents that they would like to have that full week at Thanksgiving. You know, we can't, we just can't make everybody happy, you know? For some parents, they're going to have struggle finding childcare for the full week of Thanksgiving. And for some parents, they're going to be going off to a cabin in North Carolina. We have very different needs in our community, and so we're not going to be able to accommodate them all. So I, I think, I mean, we can, I guess we can tinker with it some more. I personally am, I'm, I'm, I think this meets the basic needs of what we were looking for.
Ms. Almond.
I like the calendar the way it is too. I think about all the, how hectic the holidays can actually be. And if we don't go back until the 9th, gives you an opportunity to actually visit with family and friends, and maybe travel a little cheaper.
Mr. Bauer.
Yeah, I, getting to Ms. Schaffner's point, I think, I think what we did is we were tinkering on both ends of the, of the nine weeks, because you're, you're looking at either a full week in, you know, before Thanksgiving, or, you know, having, having those days, you need the instructional time. I think that's why they, we came to that conclusion in our, in our work session, is that we needed the instructional time before the tests, and that was more important. But I don't have a problem with it as is. You know, it's kind of like redistricting, somebody's not going to be happy.
And I would suggest that we might want to consider the option of October 3rd, which is traditionally a lower attendance day.
Mr. Rusty, was there any conversation in your committee?
Concerning October 3rd.
October 3rd or any input in any of the comments that the board has shared, such as Ms. Schaffner's Thanksgiving week or an earlier Christmas break?
Well, again, and during our work session, you know, we had one of our parents participate in that meeting, and I think they shared the feeling of, most of the folks they had heard from was that Thanksgiving seemed to be the biggest time of the year where people did travel to go to other families. So they did like the idea of having a full week during that time. I didn't hear any concern about coming back in January at the time. Most, and some had the same comment, remember Almond had about there is a difference in travel time, you could choose to travel possibly cheaper. So as far as the date of October 3rd, I didn't hear anything about, about that date, so I'm not sure. The only comment from the folks on the committee is they liked the idea, and I shared the 1718 calendar with you. They thought the idea was to have two calendars that were fairly consistent year after year, so parents and folks could actually plan. So they're built very similarly. You'll see a full week both of those years. The holidays, kind of same holidays are addressed, those type of things.
And by state statute, when is the first day of school we are allowed to start?
August 10th.
And that's as of this current year, unless the legislature comes up with something new like they did last year, so.
That's correct.
You'd have to caution your committee that we might want to have a two-year calendar, but we don't always have local control on these issues.
Dr. Caldron, I heard some concern about parents who have to work on the 21st and 22nd of November. I could explore maybe opening extended day those two days.
I think we need to do that if we're going to.
Open extended day.
Have school out. What about that first week of January? I mean, that's a whole week.
We, I can bring it up, sure.
Another possibility, just to throw it out there, in October, the 13th and 14th is student holiday for both days. And the 12th is also a holiday for some people, so that would be another thing you might want to consider. Just throwing it out there. So that would be kind of a long extended weekend. So then we'd have a week in October, a week, not a whole week, but the longer weekend in October, a whole month, a whole week in November, and a whole week and a half in December, a whole week in January.
I think the idea about the 13th and 14th, one is a teacher work day, the other.
Right, professional day.
Right, was a professional day. And the idea was, and we've talked many times about the need to keep teachers in the classroom instructing students, and the difficulty of providing professional development opportunities for teachers and not having to remove them from instruction. So the idea was building in professional development days, which we haven't traditionally in the past. Where here, we've actually, the committee built two in, one during pre-plan, there's one designated day, and then a professional day here in October.
Do you need any other feedback from us, Dr. Griffin, at this time, or do you feel comfortable with the direction we've given you?
I think I have good feedback.
Okay. Anything else, board members? Okay. Anything else, board members? Thank you so much. And thanks for the color copies, because when you're looking at gray, that's about the kind of response you'll get from us, too. Dr. Griffin, is there anything else in the superintendent's report you wanted to bring to our attention?
Yes. Before we bring this to our November meeting, I wanted to just give the board a chance to comment on our school board meetings and work sessions for December two thousand fifteen through November two thousand sixteen. The schedule is three fewer board member, board meetings, but additional work sessions.
Any board member comments? Member Allman.
I really like the new calendar. I like the fact that, I have found the work sessions we've had this year were way more valuable than trying to cram some of the conversations into a board meeting. I really, really like it.
Anything else?
Did I?
I concur as well. I think we get a lot of work done in those work sessions, and I think it's better for staff to hear what we're thinking and during the working day as well for them, so.
Okay.
I concur.
Hey, thank you for your feedback. Also, I wanted to just give a quick update where we are with the Seminole County Public School Community Leadership Academy. Ms. Phillips, if you wanna come up, she's been doing a little bit of homework for us, and while she's coming up, I wanna just tell you how Orange County Public Schools does theirs, I gather a little bit of information. They run seven or eight sessions, full-day sessions, from like nine to two-thirty or something. And the way they do their application period is they just have a link during the summer on their website, and anybody can apply. Then they have a committee, an appointed committee of three to four district employees who go through, really looking for diversity, some business people who may be able to promote the district and so on. And then the, they actually say that the committee could be used to bring some feedback to the school board. So if some issues were important enough, it could be feedback for the school board. And they do charge two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a person for their Leadership Academy. So it's a little bit different than I think what we were thinking about, but I know you wanted to know about the application process.
This was Orange County, you're telling me?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have the titles of each one of their sessions?
Yes, I do, yes.
They share. And how many students, how many community members?
Thirty-five, I believe, is their, is their number. Yes, about thirty-five.
And that's about the number we were thinking, too. Good evening, Dr.
Good evening. I definitely feel that, number one, this was a very enlightening task, and I look forward to the inception of the Community Leadership Academy. It would be a wonderful service for our stakeholders to be more informed of what we do, and for us to be as more transparent as we already are, and giving them more information so that they can be part of committees and feel more comfortable coming into our district with different initiatives that we, we have going on in, in the district. As far as the schools with Orange County Public Schools, the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, they use it for materials, for refreshments, and they also give scholarships to people that want to come aboard. So they help with that, that service as well.
So you also inquired about two additional Community Leadership Academies, correct?
Yes.
Just fill the board up real briefly about that.
City of Sanford, as well as the Seminole Fire Emergency Responders. And we looked at the Sheriff's Department. And in each of those, they have been up and running, the City of Sanford is very new. They found that they wanted to bring the community together. So with Trayvon Martin, they found that this would be an opportunity to help bridge the gap across the, the, the different city and the different communities. And with their service, they have their meetings on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And they also bring in different people from their agency to enlighten the, the public. Their sessions run fifteen weeks, that includes an orientation meeting as well as a graduation. When we look at the dates that people have come up with, it's based on the people that are doing the presenting as well as the, the public. They have surveyed them, just like with Orange County Public Schools, it started out on a Thursday, but after the first session, they found that a lot of their participants would prefer to come on Fridays. And again, it is a half-day from eight-thirty in the morning till two in the afternoon. They actually hold their sessions on school campuses. The fire rape, fire rescue, they call it their Citizens' Fire Academy, and the Citizens' Academy, City of Sanford, they have theirs at their City Hall, at their main building, but they also go out in the field, so that the different entities that work within the agency are able to share their, their facilities, the mobilization, and the, the different aspects that they have out in the community. So they take the, I wanna call them students, to the actual sites, so that they get that hands-on feel with their various demonstrations that they provide.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. That's, I just wanted to give the board a quick overview. So board members, what I'd like to do, probably prior to our next meeting, I'll be speaking with you, kinda put together a little draft. I think the big, the big decision for us is how do we start off the very first class? I think once we get the class started, and it may even be, you know, we look at maybe some recommendations from each board member, maybe an application process, maybe a combination. I think thirty-five is probably a really manageable number, especially if we wanna take them to different locations and do some things with them. I think time, at least for our first class, my preference would be after hours. I don't know about people taking off work, we can talk about that, but maybe a five to seven, or, I'm not sure how you all feel about that. What do you think people wanna come during the workday? You know, I.
I don't think people are gonna be able to get off work to do this.
Yeah.
Well, they do in other counties. And my concern, especially if you're a parent from five to seven, you're taking them away from dinnertime or athletic time. And, you know, people make a commitment to Leadership Seminole, and that's a full day, and those are all corporate people. I think if we shortened the window, I know we even see at the Foundation Golf Tournament, Charity Golf Tournament, if you even have something in the afternoon, so often people go in to do a half a day of work, and then you know what breaks loose, and then they can't pull away for the afternoon. So I think if we even started early, like a seven-thirty and let them go back.
What time does Orange County do theirs?
Eight-thirty to two.
And they also sent out an invitation to all of their constituents, so all the board members, their constituents were represented, and then they pulled the committee to make sure that they had a device, a diverse group at the inn, pulling from each area that was represented throughout the district.
Each of the board members actually put through a few people that live in their district to make sure that.
That's good.
They got input from every side of the district, but.
When are we talking about starting this?
January.
I think there's a lot of databases, that's one thing I know, not that Mr. Lawrence isn't already doing the job of fifty people, but, you know, we don't really have that rich email database of business contacts that I know other districts do, 'cause each school board, they actually have staff that does their own constant contacts for them on a regular basis as well. But, you know, before we get to that, I think this is a good way for us to build those contacts, and the word'll get out, just like it did with Leadership Seminole. And I think if we went through the Rotaries and other organizations that are already active in the community of caring, involved citizens, I think we could find people.
I like the idea of charging something for it, not a lot, but fifty dollars, 'cause then they have some skin in the game. Otherwise, it's not important if I show up or not.
And then you would, would wanna consider how many times would, could they miss to actually graduate at the inn?
Right. That's what Leadership Seminole does. You miss too many, and you're out.
So as far as time, so am I hearing from the board, you think you'd rather do it during the workday, like maybe a half a day, morning or afternoon? That's all, that's all we can do is try, you know? You thinking morning or afternoon?
Ms. Lockhart.
Morning for me, but I'm not, I don't know that I'm comfortable charging. I think, you know, initially, this was, you know, Mr. Bauer brought this forward, like as a parent academy concept, and then we kinda took it and we morphed it a little bit and we tweaked it, and I'm not sure, I don't know if I'm, if I love that idea. I'm gonna, I don't know. I feel like if we really want, I agree that there should be skin in the game, 'cause we want them to participate, but they're already giving their time. And especially if it's during the day and they're having to take time off work potentially, then they may even be docked pay to be there. So I don't know if charging them is what will give skin in the game at that point. I don't know.
Well, let me ask this, I, 'cause I don't know, I think the Sheriff's Department is free, right?
Correct.
And the City of Sanford?
Yes.
They're free, too?
Free.
Okay, well.
And remember, that's Orange County.
They're all free.
Remember, that's Orange County.
I'm sorry?
Do we necessarily wanna duplicate Orange County? I don't know. I think our community is, is just a little different, and our makeup might not take kindly too much to an already taxpayer-funded entity charging more to just talk about what they do. I could see that getting spun in an interesting direction.
It's getting very political.
Yeah.
Well, whatever we do the first year, it doesn't have to be done exactly the same going forward, just as Leadership Seminole, every year, we look at the evaluations from the prior year, tweak it, and move forward. And when we get into it, if we, we can find external sponsors, I'm sure, for whatever cost there are, so it's not a burden to the taxpayers. And at least the comments I heard from the Orange County school board members and people who attended, it was very prestigious that they got to go to the school board member meeting and graduate. And they had some of the top movers and shakers in central Florida actually go through the academy. And I think that's where we would get, I think, our benefit with having more people, more educated on what we do. Because we've seen it firsthand, haven't we, talking to our elected officials, trying to explain the testing situation? It's not really something you can do in a soundbite. So I think it's a win-win for both sides, that in a calm situation, they can actually listen to understand. And if you listen, you can learn, and then therefore effectively lead. And it would be a great opportunity for anyone who chose to join. Do you have the input you need?
I do. I'll put together a draft. I'm sure it will look different by the time we get finished with it, but I wanna start someplace. So Will, I'll have, by next board meeting, I'll have a little draft of ideas for us to work through.
Great, thank you, Dr. Phillips.
Oh, thank you.
Anything else under the superintendent's report?
No, they're read-only items.
Wonderful, thank you so much. We'll move on to board member comments, closing. Member Schaffner.
Several of us went over to Winter Springs High School. Their band is going to be going to London, and they had visitors from London come to present to them. Big occasion, it was, it was a lot of fun. But it's going to be in January of two thousand seventeen, so the band's gonna be raising money, so I'm sure you're gonna be hearing more about that. But it was a great event, and what an opportunity for our kids to be able to go to London. Ovita High School Homecoming, several of us were in that parade, and there's other band, other homecomings that are coming up as well. This Saturday night, the All County Marching Band Festival, if you haven't been to that, it is an awesome night. I have tickets, anybody's interested. I have complimentary tickets for any of you that would like to attend. So keep that in mind, it's at Seminole High School, and our eight high school marching bands are the ones that will be performing, and they're getting ready to start state competitions, so this is kinda their last hurrah to show off. And while this is not a competition per se, it is a competition, 'cause every band out there wants to be better than the other band. So it's a great evening, I love it. I did have the opportunity to, just walking up here the other day, and saw one of our former band directors, who is actually the one who started this program. And he is now elderly. I hope I'm gonna get him there Saturday night. I promised him a golf cart if we can get him to the, to the event, but it would be wonderful for him. I think he would thoroughly enjoy it. Leadership Seminole had their education day on October second. It was a day that was jam, cram, full. We had a great day, lots of great information. Thank you, Dr. Griffin, for participating, and many of you on staff participated as well. It was well-received by the class, and lots of questions. The thing they enjoy the most is interacting with the children. And they went to Cassbury, got warm welcome at Cassbury. At South Seminole Middle School, that went over really big as well. Very, very well-received, the whole day was. It was a, we were all pooped at the end of the day, but it was a great day. And the culmination at the end was, well, number one, who was it that brought all the toys for them to play with? Corbett, was that your team that did that?
Probably, probably Derek and Ryan.
Derek.
I'm telling you, they brought all these toys, all the, not toys literally, but all technology, to show what the technology is that we're using in the classroom. They, that went over so big, that was such a hit. We gotta do that again next year, that was a great idea. I didn't know they were gonna be doing that, and I thought it was wonderful. Chamber had an education day as well. Dr. Griffin participated in that. And a lot of us are going to retirements, one right after another. It seems like we're losing a lot of our good folks who are retiring. But thanks to all these retirees for all the years that they have given us. They've done a great job for us in the past, and we thank them.
Thank you. Member Bauer.
None.
Vice Chairman Lockhart.
I've talked enough.
Okay. Mrs. Allman.
Cassbury Elementary, PTSA, put on a family fun day, and our Choices Department and E-Pathways was well-represented, so thank you to them for coming out on a Saturday. They invited Milwi, South Seminole, and Sanford Middle School as well. And there were tons of science experiments going on across the campus. Outside, they had a human hamster wheel, so they were running in it to shave the ice for snow cones. It was very, very cool. Seminole Economic Development Education Network had a program on manufacturing, and it was very enlightening. There are a lot of little jewels in our county that we don't know about. Congratulations to the City of Ovita for the Medical Center. I know most of us went there. And Boys and Girls Clubs Faces of the Future. I think every elected and community leader was at that event, and they do such good work there, and we appreciate all that they do for our kids. And lastly, there was a Farm Bureau Dinner, and UFIFAS Extension had part of the program. And they offered an opportunity for some of our middle school students, because of a grant, to actually come in and build a computer that will be their own for free. So it's pretty cool. That's it.
That's great. Thank you so much. I just wanted to give a shout-out thank you to Dr. Cordoba's orthodontic company. He invites every year all his referring dentists and their staffs to give free flu shots. And this year, they decided for admission, the people would have to bring canned foods, so we could donate to the Red Bag Program at Hamilton Elementary. So I had my entire car filled to the top with food, so I wanted to say thank you for everybody for being so generous. And hopefully, there'll be other businesses who think this might be a great creative way to bring together community and help those most in need. I had the opportunity to judge our drug-free posters with our state attorney and sheriff, and I'll tell you, our students are very, very, very creative. I hope you'll be really happy with the posters that will be created, and you'll all get an invitation in the next few months for when we give the award ceremony. And I'm sworn to secrecy, nobody can know who won, but I think we'll all be happy. And Dr. Griffin and I had the chance, based on an invitation with the Orlando Realtors, they wanted us to give an update on how our millage and sales tax has been spent, because they were very supportive of us in that endeavor, and also wanted to hear an update on our schools. And I say bar none, I think every Realtor in the audience had nothing but complimentary words to say about their children who've gone through the schools, their grandchildren. We had very touching stories about some of our ESS students, that we've really saved lives, and kudos to our team and staff that do that every single day. The Boys and Girls Club Breakfast, the part that touched me the most, I know I cry at everything, but when that Crum's student stood up and talked about hearing gunfire outside her window, living with a grandparent and an uncle, but she's still on all the leadership committees, has a three-point-eight, and she wants to go to the Air Force Academy. I mean, it's just wonderful to know how we're really, truly saving lives every day. And thank you to Dr. Weisong for convening our Workforce Development Day with so many business leaders. I think it really showed how the community does want to help our students, but they don't know how. They just need to be asked. So it's wonderful. If anybody knows anyone out there who's willing to take an intern, whether it be a student or a teacher, I think it would only make what happens in the classroom more relevant, and we wanna be relevant. And Christian, Christian and Public Education, thank you for your annual meeting and always hosting with Seminole High Gospel Choir, it's the highlight of that Saturday morning. And Crum's alumni, I wanna say thank you so much for your generous donation. I attended their annual bank. their annual banquet, and they gave a generous donation to the school, for the principal to use anyway, she felt fit. And Central Florida Hotel Lodging Association had a meeting where they were so supportive of our students, and had the opportunity to meet with a lot of our elected officials in that meeting to share our sunshine solution, which 100% was well received. So I really feel that the more we can get out and communicate our message, and work collaboratively, it's going to be what's right for our students and our communities in the state of Florida. So, that being said, anything else, Dr. Griffin?
I have one other comment I meant to make when I was talking about Arts Alive. Auditions are going to be held next week, and I just want to announce again, audition applications need to be in by Friday, this Friday. Any student, or any staff member in the Seminole County Public Schools is eligible to audition for Arts Alive. Last year, we auditioned almost 100 different acts, and 15 were selected, so it's going to be, you know, the tough audition, but we've got some really great talent. We encourage our students and staff to audition.
Great, thank you so much. With no further business coming before this board, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.